Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, the thirteenth of April, two thousand and twenty one. Uh, this is being held via remote participation only. Your access is through go to meeting dot com as well as live broadcast on channel eighteen. Uh, like to, before we get going, I'd like to give a moment of uh, silence for late Stephen Ford, uh, beloved member of the board's selectmen. Um, and uh, just bow our heads for a moment. Thank you very much. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law, General Law Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict in limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. I'd like to take a roll call vote. Uh, Arthur Rouse?
Yeah.
Bill Stoltz?
Here.
Alan Peterson? Not here. Mary Nazlowski?
Mary Nazlowski here.
Joe McCarland?
Joe McCarland here.
David Harris?
David Harris here.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick here.
And Duncan Berry is here. We have uh, some interesting items tonight. The first of which is public hearing uh, continuance of PB two thousand and twenty dash twenty eight. Cape Cod Oil Company, H. Tasha, T R. of M J T Enterprises as applicant. Jacob Driscoll Engineering, Inc. as representative. Dates approval of a site plan review special permit with waiver to establish and install two thirty thousand gallon propane tanks, along with the pertinent equipment fixtures and site features pertinent to the establishment of a heating fuel resale and storage use, which is an allowable use within the zoning district. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section three twenty five dash fifty five. Properties located at six Station Ave., map thirty nine, parcel K three in the I dash L zoning district. This hearing is being continued from February twenty third, two thousand and twenty one. Do we have a representative that wishes to address the board at this time?
Yes, this is Greg Driscoll of Jacob's Driscoll Engineering here representing um, Cape Cod Oil tonight for the propane tank special permit or um, site plan approval. So, I don't know if you'd like me to present the plan or? Okay. Yeah, can you see the plans? Alright, so. The applicant, Mr. Hurst, Tasha of M G T Enterprises, proposes to install two thirty thousand gallon propane tanks on the property at six Station Ave. in Harwich. Existing parcel is assesses map thirty nine plus K three, the total area of approximately um, two point five seven acres. Installation of the propane tanks will expand their business into a propane, into the delivery of propane to residences and businesses as heating fuel and thereby establishing a new heating fuel resale and storage use in addition to the um, the oil use that they currently have. Table one, use regulations, target four, thirteen, that's the uh, the section where the shows that the uses allowed. Establishment renewal, allow of use in industrial limited zone requires site plan approval, and that's what we're looking for tonight. And as I just mentioned, the applicant currently operates a heating fuel resource and storage. Use on the budding property at State two Station Avenue. You said is located on the Westley side of Station Avenue in Harwich. Station Ave. of six Main Street to the north and Great Western Road to the south. The property is supported by residential uses to the south. Um, as well as, and the Cape Cod Royal Trail to the north. Um, there are bordering great state wetlands nearby, but not within jurisdictional areas of the work that's being proposed. The property currently contains a garage slash garage building right here that's used for truck maintenance and proposed um, tanks will be, this is a rear part of the property. So. This is existing additions plans, so Station Avenue here, intersection with Main Street, and the site goes back this way, so where the next one is. This is the proposed layout plan. Originally, we had proposed above ground tanks, but after um, working with the fire department and getting feedback, the tanks are now being proposed to be underground tanks uh, for safety reasons and we're showing um, trailer parking spaces laid out on the property that that weren't there before, that they parked there. Currently, but they're not striped, so we'll be adding the striping to the areas where the, where the trucks park. We are proposing to take the roof and put that into an infiltration system here to um, take care of some of the runoff, uh, even though the site's already paved, um, it was pointed out that some of this work was, has been kinda creeping along throughout the years and then expanded to this back area. So, what we're looking to do is um, take the roof runoff and put it into the ground to to mitigate some of that um, previous area, uh, and this will be a little bit more of a burst area here for the tanks, so. We're also proposing to bring a hydrant into the site. And right here, a new, possibly a water connection, um, dealing with, coordinating with the water department on that and also with the fire department on a hydro flow test to gauge the availability for water and development of a emergency plan for the um, for the site. Also showing erosion controls uh, all along, yeah, paving along here, make sure that um, and for this work, this water work over here and then around the area for the excavation for the tanks. Just to make sure that there's no issues with sedimentation heading towards the wetlands or off property. So, they're an existing business on the site, they're just looking to expand into this new area that um, that a lot more people would rather have gas, whether it's great gas from a utility or propane. So, um, there's demand out there, anybody that builds new is typically going propane if they don't have gas rather than oil, so. It's a growth market for them and that's what they're looking to do. Did receive comments from the planner and town engineer that we addressed with this uh, current sort of plans that we have. Uh, so this is the second revision that we've prepared. We that uh, haven't had any further feedback on, on those issues, I can go through them if you like, or if you just wanna turn it over to the board to ask questions.
Well, let's uh, hear from the town. Megan, would you care to address us with the uh, staff comments?
Sure, thank you Duncan. We have some engineering comments that were turned in regarding total, asking the question if, if there's more than one acre of total disturbance associated with the proposed project. Griffin didn't think there was, but he, he wanted a confirmation um, that the total disturbance was less than one acre. If it's more than an acre, a local stormwater permit, local stormwater permits required. Um, and he asked questions about test pits to confirm groundwater separation from the bottom of the infiltration proposed. He questioned existing septic system on the property. The health department did not have a file on this, this property. There's a file for the adjoining building, but not for the building that's on this property. And questions about groundwater recharge volume. Um, it looks like the initial review had a miscalculation, wanting confirmation that that was corrected. And elements of water quality enhancement, are those being proposed? And has there been any consideration to installing a structural water quality unit to treat the runoff from the tank area? Um, conservation had comments here that they don't have any direct concern with the project. Um, they do note that there's conservation resource area within a hundred feet and the removal of, of trees or other other materials would need conservation approval. Uh, water and highway had no issues, and I do see that the fire chief is on the call. Uh, we were waiting for a report regarding a fire hydrant and a pressure test. So if, if you would entertain hearing from Chief LeBlanc, I think it's appropriate right now.
Please.
Well, Chief LeBlanc, um, we were out there last night with the water department and we did do a control of the hydrant. And our feeling is the hydrant that's there and the water supply that is adequate for um, for the potential issues that we may have uh, in the event of a fire at the facility. Uh, the biggest issue that we had in the beginning was the tanks being above ground and the potential for fire with them above ground and, and obviously being a much bigger hazard. They eliminated most of that when they uh, changed the design by burying the tanks. So, um, the other concern would be a leak from the facility. And if you look at the grade of the facility, the um, the residential properties are actually above the uh, the plane of where the tanks are gonna be, propane settles. So, the, the natural direction of the propane is gonna be toward the bike path and away from the residential houses on Great Western Road. So, we're, we're comfortable with the design as it is. Um, obviously, it does present a uh, well, a large volume of propane in a residential area, but we feel that the um, the features that they put in place plus the uh, resources we have we're capable of uh, mitigating any incidents that may happen there.
Thank you very much. Uh, can I?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McCarland?
Can I ask the uh, the chief a question?
Please.
Chief, um, do I understand, I, I'm a little confused. I, I have a copy of your report of April fifth in front of me. Uh, and uh, item number six there talks about doing a hydrant flow test on April twelfth to see if the sole hydrant on the property is adequate. Do I understand what you said to say that you did do that test and you find that one hydrant is sufficient?
Yeah, so the hydrant that's there actually isn't on the property, it's actually in the corner of Station Avenue and Main Street. Main Street.
Yeah.
We, we did do a flow test off of that. They're talking about adding an additional hydrant into the property. Um, because that hydrant with dead end on a main, it's not gonna significantly change the amount of water available. Uh, which is something that Dan Pelletier could explain way better than I can, but it's, it's a, it's because it dead ends, the flow isn't necessarily greater. But we, based on what we did last night, which was when we, when we did the flow test, we feel that there's adequate water supply available for any incident that will occur on the property.
That was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome, Joe.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you. A question for Chief LeBlanc. Um, the, the tanks being buried, are they going to be situated in a trench and not covered over with earth or stone? Or are they gonna be completely buried? I'm thinking if they are completely buried, then does that mitigate the chance of a blevvy because there's no heat source?
So, yeah, the, the design is that they're anchored and buried, and, and that is correct. There's no heat source. What, so just to give everybody quick, quick science class, what a blevvy is, is propane is liquid. When we heat the tank up, the liquid becomes gas, as gas overpressurizes the vessel. The weak points, the valves at the ends usually let go, and then you have all that volume of liquid that then becomes gas very rapidly. It, it detonates. By burying them, there's virtually no way that you can have a heat source underneath the tank. There's no way we can heat the tank and therefore we, uh, we prevent that emergency from happening. So really, with this issue, the, the biggest issue would be a leak that we'd be worried about, and we're not necessarily worried about the tanks, it would be from the piping, and there's safety valves in place and we're comfortable with the design put forth by the engineer.
And, and they are, Chief LeBlanc, is the uh, are the tanks going to be covered versus just sitting in a trench and visible to the eye? They're gonna be covered with some material?
Yeah, it's a sand. Yeah, they, they are covered.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Let's go ahead.
Dave Harris, I, I wanna make sure I understood. The drawings show the tanks to be covered with fine sand. Is that correct?
Uh, that is a um, generic plan. Um, alright, so this is finished, right? Um, it will be, it's like, it's, I think it goes sand below, I guess, sandbag below the tank. But this will be a concrete slab over the top of the tank. Um, Jody Andon is the propane consultant, he's also on that, the meeting tonight, if there's any specific questions for that, but that's correct, right? We're putting a concrete slab on top of this, right?
Yes, there is, there is sand around the tank, uh, just to help it settle drainage.
Um, continuing on, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, planning, planning comments, staff comments, the administratively, the application is generally complete. Uh, we do have several butters letters that have been attached to your packet, and I do believe there are butters on the line today. Um, we've questioned the landscape or screening plan and pictures were submitted by the applicant showing existing trees along the, um, I believe it's the south side of the property that properly screen existing residences. Um, we had a question about a stockade fence and a tank storage area that's shown on the plan that encroaches on the Cape Cod Rail Trail land. Um, there is no easement for the use of that land. And a reply from the applicant indicates they will pursue an easement or remove that material. And then lastly, we have um, the trailer parking along the north side of the, the lot that does not currently meet the setbacks. Again, the applicant said that they would address that and revise the plan.
Very good.
Uh, this is Dave Harris again. Megan, did you say that there were butters letters attached? There were none attached to mine.
Right.
Oh, okay. Um, but we do have several butters letters. And they, I thought they were in your packet, um, that's what we thought it was.
They're all probably the same PDF that I received, so, in my packet, it's right after the um, fire chief letter.
Yeah, maybe that they're just not in the printout, that they're in the PDF.
Yes. Yes, so they'd be in your PDF. Um, we have butters along the uh, Great Western Road that have concerns about traffic, uh, truck traffic from three AM. Um, and asking questions about um, will the tanks be hazardous to the neighbors? Um, also, will the building be open to the public? Is it, is it now a retail use? Uh, original concerns were that the tanks were above ground and now they are below ground. Um, and I believe all the other letters were similar to that.
Right. Trying to find which, which page they were on, cause it's a long document.
Yeah, there, I, I found them, there, there, there's quite a few. Section, I, thanks Megan, I forgot, I didn't even think to look in the electronic packet.
Yeah. So, do we have any other questions from the board at this time?
Um, Mr. Chairman, it's Craig.
Okay, let's go with Craig first, please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is, not particular to the, the burying of the tanks, but um, are the tankers that are stored overnight there, are they always empty when they're stored? But do they ever get filled at the end of the workday and then they sit overnight, um, ready for delivery first thing in the morning? I guess curiosity on my part, or if there are safety regulations uh, that prohibit that or allow it? Thank you.
I can answer that question for you, Mr. Chadwick. Um, the transports would be empty. Uh, the bobtails might have some gas in them, um, just being prepared for an emergency delivery. Oftentimes, you get calls at night, so you want the driver to be able to go in quickly and make that delivery. But those are the small delivery tanks that we refer to, or small delivery trucks, excuse me, that we refer to as bobtails.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Arthur.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, how many additional um, trucks will be needed for this new business? How many additional trucks will be added? For the distribution?
Mr. Driscoll?
Uh, I don't, Jody, do you know that question? I don't know if we talked about that.
Well, actually, um, he's already in the business now. He just goes to another facility to fill, so the trucks that he presently has are the trucks that he will still have.
Okay.
Yeah, but they, but, but he went off-site to pick up gas, correct?
Yeah, yeah, but it doesn't change the number of trucks that he had in his operation. I don't know what his plan is for growth. I cannot speak that number.
I'm just curious if that was gonna impact the neighborhood or all. Thank you.
Thanks, Arthur. Hi, Mary, I gotta unmute, thanks. Mr. Chairman? Uh, I, I think Mary Nazlowski is, is addressing us.
Thanks, Duncan. Um, just a couple of questions. Um, first to uh, the representatives, do we know what the delivery times are gonna be relative to um, the company receiving the propane?
Um, I believe there's general times that they work is seven to five. Um, I think there was something where the, the trail drivers, or the car trailers that they have on site, they arrive early in the morning, and then they leave. Um, as far as delivery of the propane to fill these tanks, I would assume that would be during business hours, is that sound, correct, Jody?
It is, but being on the Cape, we sometimes make, we try and keep the trucks out of the worst of the traffic, so, um, that can be very flexible.
So I guess I, I would have a concern because it does abut a neighborhood. Um, and dealing with, you know, the, the truck traffic and the, just the simple noise, um, for a butters. Um, I would, you know, if you can't speak to the exact hours that the, that the company typically does do it, um, I guess I'd be, I'd be wondering if they'd be willing to limit the times uh, that they could receive those deliveries. Um, the other question I had uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, Megan, the conservation comments, I know they had said um, that it looked okay. Was that, were those comments after the plan to change to be underground versus above ground? I'm just curious if the, if the location of the underground would make a difference on, on the conservation comments.
Sure, let me take a look at that.
I wouldn't think that it would, cause it's the horizontal distance, which is their jurisdiction, so it's the red foot buffer line right here. That's as close as it gets to any of the work.
Mary, can I go back to your question about delivery times?
Sure.
Did we get an answer on that, if that was a conditional element that you wanted to pursue?
So, I, I would, I would like some additional information as to what the, what the actual delivery times are. You know, I, I understand wanting to stay out of the, out of the heavy daily traffic, but I also think it's a unique location where it does abut um, residential neighborhood.
Right.
I, I do have an answer from Mr. Hurst in an email. I don't believe he's on tonight. Did email a response saying that the delivery trucks, which are the bobtail trucks, they run between seven AM and five PM. The, uh, the big
The delivery, are the bobtails the ones that deliver from the tank to the residential home?
Yeah.
So what about the, what about the large tanker deliveries to the site?
Uh, the He doesn't specifically state the time they come in. He did state the time that his transports leave.
Okay, so I guess
That was four AM.
Four, so I, I guess I would, I would like to know what time those, the bigger delivery trucks come in just because of the larger trucks, the air brakes and, and the associated noise with those. Um, and I guess a, a follow-up question I would have for the company is, does he have any idea whether, you know, what the increase in, in trips are going to be to the site? Like, i- i- does he anticipate a ten percent increase in, in trips to and from the site? Or does he, is his expectation uh, that it would be similar? I mean, just trying to get a sense for the, the site and the location.
I'm actually asking him that.
I think, I would think there would be minimal fees. Apparently, has big delivery trucks that are leaving the site and picking up at another location and delivering. Um, they would just fill out the site, so same in and out, I guess, for those trucks. Um, I guess the only increase, maybe what you're asking is, is the tanker trucks filling up these tanks? Which I think would be pretty minimal. I'm not sure, Jody, how many deliveries would they get a week or a month or?
Right, exactly. But I would, but I would also expect that if he's got additional, if, I mean, by the virtue of having additional supplies on site, you would think that it would increase the trips off the site too for, for the retail delivery as well. Just, just trying to frame the picture of what the increased um, traffic is going to be.
I'm waiting for a response. As soon as I get that, I'll be back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stoltz? I just wanna make sure Mary's done. Mary, did you have more?
I just had the follow-up from Megan on the, on conservation. I just wanted to be sure that conservation was still okay with the underground versus above ground.
So, conservation comments must have been verbal, there isn't anything written in the file. Um, a question to the engineer would be, are these tanks in the same location as they were originally?
They are, they are, yes, they are, but they would just take it from above ground to put on the ground.
Okay, then I would, I would have to agree that their jurisdiction is, is horizontal.
Okay. Then I had one last question. Megan, um, is there a recommendation with respect to not knowing whether there's a septic on the site itself?
Um, the, the
Condition or not.
There wasn't anything specific from the health department. However, there is a water line going into the building, so there must be water coming out of the building.
Okay.
And having Um, and having, having no file on file, the health department would indicate that it's some type of a, an older cesspool system, which wouldn't necessarily be illegal if, if they're not making any changes to the building. However, we'd like to know where it, it is, so it's not being run over by these big trucks.
So what would be an appropriate, um, potential condition for the, for the site plan? Can, for potential conditions on the site plan, um, that would cover the health department, I guess, would be a, um, a thought I would have. Do we need, would the health department need a, need a plan citing any cesspools on the facility? And that, would that be sufficient?
Something sufficient would be an as-built locating the wastewater system.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. It looks like Bill Stoltz was next.
Okay, I have a question on the site plan. Um, the, the locus on the Upper Great Corner shows a, um, so Station Ave. And then it shows another road coming into it, which I believe was called Depot Road at one time. And it extends into the property where the gas tanks are going to be. And I'd like to get a clarification from the town engineer of what the actual roads are there. Because I have, um, I have a top, I have a topo map that shows it named as Station Ave. And then I have another map from Google which shows, uh, Station Ave and Depot Street. Um, so I'm confused that the difference between the large site plan is showing Main Street going right into that property, which was never there because Main Street was rerouted back in the seventies or eighties when they re- redid the bridge. And it didn't go down into the, into the property where the tanks are. Uh, so I think we need to get a clarification from the town engineer or, or from both town engineer and the engineer for the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stoltz. Is that Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes, sorry, sir.
Please.
But, so when you, the Station Avenue is the access off of Great Western Road that goes into the Cape Cod Royal Property. Main Street, there's a spur of what used to be Main Street that ran into the old Katie Wood Products across the railroad tracks. There's, it dead ends into that section of Station Avenue. Main Street actually, it's almost a fork, goes off to the right, over the railroad bridge. Um, that goes over the bike path and then into North Howard. So it's, I don't know what that short section of road is called. I believe it has a main street address for the building that's there. But it's just really a, a dead-end street that connects to Station Avenue.
Yeah, well, the main, the, the address you're using is for the front part of that building, which sits on Main Street. I have a Google map in front of me that shows that that road coming down in the back of that building is called Depot Street. And so I need to, I would think that we need to get a clarification on that from the town engineer. And I would like the board to, to ask that.
And that's it?
Thank you, Bill. Dave, did you have any questions? Dave Harris, did you have any question? I think you might be muted. Far six.
Can you hear me now?
Now, you can hear me.
Okay, uh, yeah, I've been reading the letters from the abutters and I'm, you know, I may have missed it in the discussion. Has there been responses to the, uh, to abutters letters by the, by the applicant?
No, we haven't provided, uh, official, I guess, um, direct response to those like we did for the comments from, um, the, the planner and the engineer.
Oh, yes, questions that are respondable, uh, or truck traffic from 3:30 AM to midnight. Uh, question and also the open fire pits.
If you'd like, I can answer that. I just got a response to Mary's earlier question about, um, the number of transports and the time of day. The time of day is between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM for the deliveries to the bulk facility coming in. Um, and right now, he presently has three loads or three bulk transport loads a week coming in. Um, but he, he hopes to grow that.
I feel the only off, off-hour traffic will be for emergency fills for customers.
Yes, that is his intention, yeah.
We also mentioned fire pits.
Yeah, I can address that question too. Um, that is, uh, number five of, um, Mr. Coleman's, um, letter. Uh, he asks what the distance is. Um, now the tank, the tanks are more than 50 feet from the property line, um, which is what's required by code. They would not be, uh, they would still be allowed to have their fire pits, this is the answer he's looking for.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Great. Did we have anybody else on the board who needs to be heard or has direct questions? Mr. Chairman, David Blaine. Yes, sir.
I, listen, we, I have an incident that I have to go to, so I'm going to bail off the meeting. If anybody has any questions specifically for me, could we, um, have them ask them? And then I, like I said, I need to depart.
Okay, let's soak this up to the public then. Uh, is there anybody here that's a member of the public that would like to address a question to the fire chief? If not, I'd like to release him. I think you're good to go, Mr. LeBlanc.
I, actually, I do have a quick question.
Oh, we do, okay. Go ahead. Dressing and please give your, your, uh, name and, and, uh, address and town.
Sure, Dan Rodrick here, uh, 414 Great Western Road.
Thank you, Mr. Rodrick.
Thank you. Um, the question I have, uh, for chief, uh, I understand that, uh, the risk has been mitigated with the burying of the tank. Uh, has any study been done on a catastrophic failure? So I'm thinking of a worst-case scenario and what that would mean for any of the abutters. So, you know, I mean, there are obviously gas lines and there are buried tanks, but there are also tanker trucks on the property. So I, I'm just kind of curious if there has been any, any study or research on a catastrophic failure and what that would do to the, uh, nearby abutters.
So I believe, and, and this may be a question better answered by the engineers, but, um, the, the, the risk reduction with the, the tanks being buried reduces the catastrophic failure of the tank. Um, because you're not going to have a, uh, a sudden release of gas. You're going to have a slow gradual release under the ground, which will, as it releases, actually freeze the ground. It does create a hazard, but it's not a significant hazard if the tank were to rupture in open atmosphere. The tanks, the tankers on the property, our understanding is, and this was confirmed a little while ago, with the exception of some of the bobtails, will be left empty. So that reduces the risk of having a, a significant incident in the open atmosphere as well. Um, and the engineer may be able to better answer the, the catastrophic failure with the underground.
Is it, um, I'm fairly familiar with, uh, above-ground and underground storage tanks. And, uh, tanks, empty tanks, uh, can actually explode, I believe. Is that correct?
That, that would be correct.
Or dear empty tanks as well.
Right, that would be correct because there's always some level of vapor in the tank. The, the, um, impact will be much less because there's not as much fuel, uh, the, you know, to create the incident.
But it requires heat impingement. It's impingement on the tank that creates failure. Um, and that's the reason for going with the underground system. One thing that we haven't discussed tonight is that the whole system, uh, the piping above ground is all thermally protected. Should there be a fire at the piping, uh, above the ground, um, where heat impingement can't happen? The pneumatic systems melt and it closes all the valving, reducing or eliminating all of the fuel. So there's, there's a number of different safeties that are in place here aside from just burying the tanks. That this, this facility is thermally protected for fire.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
I, um, how many pipes are above ground? From what I can tell, it's just the, um, is it the pumps only or is the other pipes above ground?
You have very minimal pipes above ground on this. Uh, Greg, can you, uh, go to the schematic drawing? Okay, so this is a schematic drawing. You see, um, piping coming out of the domes of the tank. And they are going to the loading, to the loading stanchions. One stanchion is for a transport offload and the other is for a bobtail load.
Right, are those thermal protected?
Yes, they are.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Rodrick, did you have further questions?
I, I do not, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public or members of the board who have questions for Mr. LeBlanc? I think you're free to go, sir. Thank you so much for taking the time this evening, for joining us.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Uh, other questions from the public, it looks like we have a few people here. Um, please identify yourself, uh, and your address. If you'd like to address the board. Um, I'm, I'm asking not in, not as kind of a courtesy is because in the electronic packet, I did not, unless somebody could tell me what pages they're on, I could not locate the abutters' concerns, um, in the, in that document. So I can't really, I wish I could help, uh, at least direct the conversation in that way. If we're not going to have any, uh, vocal participation or if we've had it, that's it. You know, I'm good with that too. So I still not want to go over this without having had at least airing, uh, whatever may be of concern.
Okay, it, it's page nine, sorry, page nine of the packet, and I have it on the screen right now. Let me zoom in on it.
Flown right by them, okay. Alright.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah?
Who, who, okay, am I online?
Uh, well, please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Linda Rodrick, at 414 Great Western Road. Who am I talking to?
This is the chairman of the planning board. My name is Duncan Berry and we've got, uh, an additional 22 people online.
Okay, no problem. My question is, uh, right now to let you know. Uh, I've been a resident from the town of Howard for 74 years. I've seen many changes, uh, and this piece of property has always been a contention with me from the time it got started. But beyond that, let us put it this way. Uh, you're going to put underground facilities in? And I do understand that it's more feasible than putting it above ground. And how many containers on that property are filled with LP above ground at any one time? Number one question.
The, um, the applicants aren't on right now, but I believe the answer would be none, no, other than those two, couple of obtae.
When do, when do they fill the empty containers?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, but I would assume when they need to transport them on site use.
The, the empty containers are transported over the road and installed at a residential or commercial account. And then they are filled. They are not transported over the road fo- full.
Oh, I'm confused now. If they have no gas in them and they're empty at your site, when do they get the gas?
They get the gas when they're moved to a new customer's site and then they deliver to them with a bobtail. DOT does not allow us to transport, uh, tanks over the road, uh, full.
Dan, for reason?
Uh. I'm hav- I'm having a little problem with that statement. Just tell me one more time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I, I've been, so ma'am, the, the, it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, folks. The tanks are unlike, unlike when we as a resident goes to the store to get a liquid propane tank for our gas grill, they're filled. But they are taking empty tanks. And the bobtail is the truck that is, that has a tank in it that delivers to the location. So if somebody has a liquid propane tank at their home to power a generator, the smaller delivery truck would fill the tanker, would fill the tank at the residential property location. So if you had a generator at your house, they would take a truck down the street to your house and fill it there. I think, I think that's what the engineer is, is trying to tell you is that the tanks that are there that they are installing at another location are empty when they're on their site and they're not filled until the truck delivers to the residential house.
Okay, and I understand that. So there is a truck that does take, take the LP out of the storage tanks from underground on the site. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so there is a transformation from the underground to this truck, right?
Yes.
So all safety measures are me- in, in, included in that transformation?
All of the safety measures are included on both the, the bulk plant and on the truck. They have separate types of safety measures in place.
Hello?
I'd also like to say that all of the, the people that are coming in and out of this facility are trained and authorized. Uh, the propane industry has their own training certification program called CTAP, Certified Employee Training. And bobtail and transport drivers and anyone who operates the plant must be trained and recertified in this, in these different categories.
Does that help you, ma'am?
Uh, well, I have another question about the underground, uh, storage units that are used. How long is the, the viability of those units? Uh, like anything, uh, they can't stay underground forever. Who discovers what leak, leakage or anything like that can happen? Especially in, um, the water, you know, contamination. It's like, uh, who monitors that?
Uh, they are protected and monitored and that is done by the, the applicant, by the property owner.
How long is the, um, tanks, uh, ver- verified that they can be underground? Because they don't, they can't last forever.
They last a really long time. I've seen them underground for as long as 50 years.
Excuse me, 50 years you've seen it? You know, you don't look that old, but thank you very much.
Well, I've seen them, it, well, I am actually pretty old, um, but I have seen.
Not as old as me, honey.
Okay, I've seen installations and we've inspected them. There's, there's actually an inspection program and, um, I'm happy to explain that too. Part of the work that I do is with the fire department. And then with the applicant to come up with an operation and maintenance plan, which is also required. These have a very lengthy maintenance program to them. And those are all recorded, um, some of it's recorded on a weekly basis. So the applicant would, would take care of this and maintain this facility. And if things, if things just aren't right, then they would address them. But there is not a set time by code that they must come out.
Um, unlike the, um, application of gasoline, gas stations that have to, their tanks are monitored and they only go a certain amount of times for older, I understand, older gas stations. But still, I don't know where they're, you're saying there's no limit to the time limit of these underground tanks?
Nope, not in the state of Massachusetts. There is not a time limit for them. There is a maintenance program for them. And if they do not meet those standards, then they have to be removed.
There's also the factor of self-regulating concern. Because if there's loss of product, it's loss of, uh, margin, loss of profit. So the business itself is incentivized to maintain, just for the simple business of maintaining, you know, maintaining their, their, uh, their enterprise, so. And it looks as though also that the containment is a multiple-layer trough. So anything that would leak would be contained within a shell. That's not going, you know, it's going into, to that fill and then being trapped in. and then being trapped in a shell. So I'm, I'm sure that this is, you know, another layer of protection. It looks like it's built into the code.
The safety program include uh sensors that can detect leaks.
I know that.
Uh, no, the um, the plan does not call for that.
Do we have any other questions from the public?
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stolz?
Yes, Bill.
Uh, does the state inspect uh these tanks uh on a monthly basis or a year, yearly basis?
Uh, there is not a set inspection. The local fire department has asked for the state to come in and do inspection and to review the whole process.
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Any additional questions?
I, I have an additional question. Again, it's Dan Roderick, four fourteen Great Western.
Thank you, right ahead.
We had talked about uh a seven AM to six PM uh daily operation. Uh, is that Monday through Friday, or is that seven days a week?
Typically, it would be Monday and Friday. If we had a cold snap in the winter, it might be Saturday deliveries. The ideal would be Monday through Friday, but if we do see a cold snap and there is a, a problem, there might have to be some weekend deliveries. I can't say that it would never happen.
Um, has, uh, a follow-up question to that. Has the uh, the company considered uh, you know, what, what their activity is doing uh to the abutters and to the, I guess to the environment in general, in, insofar as, I guess, to quiet enjoyment of the environment and uh personal property? Um, so, you know, we know that there are trucks. We know that uh there are trucks that will idle, and we know that there are trucks that will operate. And we've heard that, you know, the intent of the owner is to grow the business. Uh, so we're gonna see more activity. And even if that is between the hours of, you know, say, seven AM and six PM, six days a week. Um, you know, I'm just curious, you know, if, if they have, um, and if, you know, done any types of studies to see what, you know, levels of decibels that might be acceptable uh so that folks can jo- enjoy the, you know, the, the quiet enjoyment of their property and/or their, their own health, uh, a- as well as, you know, the health of the environment. Uh, we, we do know that uh, you know, decibels above certain ranges are not healthy. Uh, and, and they actually adversely uh impact property values. Um, so, so I wonder if there, you know, if, if there has been any consideration or study on, on that activity. Or if there's been any, any mitigation on the, you know, the level of noise and activity and that what, what that might do to a, a, a butters in the environment. Sound reduction, fencing, uh, landscape improvements, like.
Yeah, there, that is not something we have addressed with this um seminal, and it's not something that um I'm aware of that's a requirement of uh set upon approval, so.
But in sure, in the, in that zone, they are covering what's required by code. Any other questions? Do we, uh, Mary, are we satisfied with the uh conditions that we're maintaining here?
So, you know, I, I don't know whether um, whether my colleagues are ready to vote at this point or if there were questions that, that people were still looking to have answered.
Joe McFarland's ready to vote.
No, can I have a question here?
Okay.
How, how was anybody ever thought about how the uh our property is going to be valued by our property insurance because of these particular changes that are budding us? Are they gonna compensate us in any way? It's not a laughing matter. Hello? Is anybody hearing me?
Oh, uh, I hear you, um.
You do, you, do you pay property insurance? If you lived in Harwich, what, would you be putting up with this? Uh, no, I'm sorry, it's a little hidden question. Nobody wants to answer it.
Duncan, can I ask a question, please?
Please, Mary, go right ahead.
So to um, through you to Megan. Megan, what's the zoning on the property? Can you confirm that for us?
It is in I L, I L zone.
And is the, the use that's proposed, is it a, um, it's a special permit use?
That's correct.
Okay. So it is part of the zoning, it is part of zoning by law that if we grant a special permit, the use can be, can be done on that, on that property.
So you're going, they're going for a variance, right?
No, ma'am, it's not a variance. It's called a special permit.
By, by special?
Because that's how the zoning or, that's how the zoning by law works. There are some uses that are a matter of right. There are some uses that are by special permit. There are some uses that are not allowed at all. And this use is by special permit, which allows the planning board to put certain conditions on it. If the planning board believes that it's appropriate for the location, and it's an industrial zone where this, where this location is cited.
Thank you, Mary.
Welcome.
That's uh, matter for you, ma'am? This is a matter of the legality of what's we have in the code, was permitted by the code, the particular zone in which the facility is located.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stolz?
Yes, Bill.
Um, I think that, that the board should um wait to vote on this until we get a clarification from the town engineer about the actual road situation down there. So we probably should postpone this until the next date that's available.
Could you, Chairman? Could you just, uh, one, one second. Um, Bill, could you just explain to me one more time where it is that you see Depot Street? Because I actually drove up there, and to me, what I see in the map is reflected i- in the site map that's on the screen now is exactly reflects what I was driving through this afternoon. I didn't see any spur. I didn't see any sign for Depot Road. I saw basically, it looked like an access driveway to the left. And then it's kind of like a upside-down Y, uh, and at the fork to the right is an oblique angle that takes you right back to Great Western.
That's correct. The problem is that originally there was a Depot Street, and it has disappeared, and they show it on the locus on the front page of their, their site plan. They do show a road going into the property, but on the site plan, they don't show it. Um, and if you look on it, if you go on Google, uh, you, you'll find it that a Depot Street goes into that property.
Yeah. I have the Google map up, but I mean, a Google map isn't a right-of-way, you know, it's, in this case, it's, it's wrong. Um, this property was surveyed by a professional lands surveyor, and the right-of-way of the roads was located as was the property lines, and there is no street, there's no right-of-way that goes into this property.
So I, my question is, it was, was surveyed by somebody. It was, there was a deep, there was a depot road there before Main Street was rerouted. And I think we should get a clarification from the town engineer before we go forward with voting on this.
All right. Well, a professional lands surveyor has prepared this plan, the existing conditions plan for the site. And it's been thoroughly researched. He's, he's signed and sealed it. And so, um, there is no right-of-way coming into the site as, as the Google map shows. The Google map isn't, um, is a correction, yes.
Mary?
Mr. Chair, um, I, I'm not trying to disagree with you. Streets, streets and old streets, in particularly in this area, there very well could be a spur from, from deeper road that is on that corner that may not have shown up. Um, no, and the reason I'm saying that is our own fire chief commented that Depot Road was in the back. Um, so I appreciate the, the, the survey. I do see the Y that our chairperson is talking about, and to me, it looks like if you look at the, I'm looking at the the location, it looks like the right part of that Y actually could, does, could have been a driveway, could have been a street at one point that looks like a depot road. Um, and I don't disagree with you that Google isn't, isn't the all end-all and may not be correct. But Depot informs itself from GIS, so it could be informing itself from a town GIS that, that has an old, um, an old location. So, um, you know, I, I don't know that, that continuing for two weeks is, is necessarily a bad idea uh if it clears up that issue.
I see what you're saying now. I see, I, I now see what you're talking about there, Dave.
It looks like it kind of goes actually over the building.
Right.
Over some trees.
Yep.
And the, and the only reason I, I'm, you know, I, I'm saying it is, the chief talked about, about a depot back there. So, you know, it is
Okay.
It's old and abandoned as well, so.
Right.
It might not.
Kate Jacobs, he's my business partner, from Professional Lands Surveyor Research Center, and, and addressing the concern.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, this is Ed Braz. We're at four twenty-four Great Western Road. Do I still have an opportunity to ask a question?
Please do.
Um, my, my question is, you know, we've, we've been, when, when we built our property, we're actually, when we bought the property that our home is built on, um, the s- the space behind us was an open field. Um, and, uh, you know, obviously, as uh Cape Cod Oil has grown, the impacts of that business have uh affected us directly as well as our neighbors. Um, my, my question to the board and to the staff that are on the call is, for the property itself, what are, are there restrictions on when the enterprise can operate? And if so, what are they? Uh, because I do have, you know, just experience, my experience has been that as a resident here, since uh we, we occupied our home in two thousand and four, as the operation has grown, uh, not just the LP, the proposed LP uh business, but the overall oil business. I mean, it essentially operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, there are trucks that depart as early as four in the morning, uh, the, the, the tanker trucks. Uh, they arrive back at the site and offload, you know, and all, you know, a- as I've heard trucks out there on a regular basis is late as ten in the evening um after they unload, and then they back down to their respective parking spots and then back down into the storage garage. So I, I guess my, you know, that is my observation, but I guess my general question is uh what are the restrictions for hours of operation for the facility overall?
Megan, do we have, is that a zoning issue for industrial I dash L zone, hours of operation in the code?
I'm looking that up right now, um, and so far, there isn't anything specific on hours of operation aside that you, as the planning board, can place certain conditions on special permits. So I'll continue to look. If I find something, I'll let you know.
And I guess that would be, you know, as the, uh, uh, sorry, if I may interject there, uh, the, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I guess that's one of our biggest concerns, you know, not all, the, the overall safety concerns seem to be addressed. You know, all things being considered equal, we obviously wouldn't like to have this facility in our backyard. But I do understand that um the property is zoned for it, and, and uh the applicant has met the requirements, and I've had conversations with Chief LeBlanc. And I feel like most of those safety concerns have been addressed, but the larger concern is just the operation. It's, if it's going to grow, it's gonna mean more activity. And it does have an impact on us. Um, you know, it's to hear backup alarms and large diesel trucks operating at all hours of the day and night, it uh, it does have an impact. Um, you know, when we, you know, my, my wife is a, grew up in Harwich, I'm a transplant, we're raising our kids here. When we, you know, w- when we looked at buying, thinking about what the future of our home was gonna be and where we were gonna live, it was a time where we didn't think we were gonna be able to afford a, a home on Cape Cod, thankfully. Um, you know, with the help of family and friends, and uh my father-in-law is uh in the trades, and he helped us build our home. And we've raised our family here, and, and, you know, we understand that we have this in our backyard. But at the same time, there needs to be things in place that mitigate um the impact on not just us, but the neighborhood overall. Um, and I just, I, I feel like the board is obligated to try to make sure that this doesn't have any more negative impact on us as, as residents.
Thank you, Mr. Braz.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McFarland.
I just wanna, in response to that gentleman, uh, I mean, this apparently, uh, all this, these things were there wh- when he purchased his house uh on Great Western, so uh.
Uh, Mr. McFarland, excuse me, sir. May, may I answer that directly, please? Uh, that is not the case. You entirely misunderstood what I said. We purchased this property that our home is built on prior to two thousand and four. When we purchased the land that our house sits on, the space that is now occupied by the garage that houses the tractors and the proposed site plan for the addition of the tanks was an open field. Does that, is that clear it up for you?
Not really, ju- and, and who owned it?
The property that I sit in right now?
No, 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 no. The property behind your house.
I don't know.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right, so what's the will of the board here?
So I, I guess, Mr. Chair, my question is, I mean, if members of the board aren't comfortable closing the public hearing, is the applicant available for the next meeting, which is today's the thirteenth, would they be available for the twenty-seventh?
Uh, twenty-seven might be kinda near close, um, in order to address everything and, and reissue.
Oh, and then, then meeting after that, Megan, would be the eleventh of May?
May eleventh.
Okay, and how far ahead would you like to see the revisions? So you got the time to look at them? About a week?
So that's a week before, so yes, that, at least seven, at least seven days ahead of time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We continue the matter to, uh, May eleventh. I second it.
Uh, can I just ask that we say no earlier than six thirty PM?
Thank you.
Certainly, I accept that amendment.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bradley.
Hey, thank you. Um, can we, before we take the vote on that, can we s- uh specify and make sure we understand or in, are all in agreement, those items that we would like answered for the, the continued meeting? Just so that everybody's on the same page, and if people need to do homework, they know what it is that they have to do and bring back to the board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I can give a quick list of the things that I think we have, and if anybody thinks I missed something. I can give a quick list of the things that I think we have, and if anybody thinks I missed something, let me know. One, looking to have the issue of the depot road spar cleared up. And once cleared up, addressed on the plans, I think that is, I personally think that's not only a question for the applicant, but also for the town engineer. Two, I think we need to clarify if there are any existing operational time restrictions on the property.
Thank you, yeah.
As it exists now, that isn't to say that we can't put a condition on this site plan special permit for. For the LP use. Guards. I don't know, Megan, could we clarify on the conservation piece? Just to make sure that that's still okay with the, with the underground, and I'm sure probably is, but it would be nice to know that internal.
Sure.
If. Those are the three things I thought, and just one other question, I don't think there's, there's no fencing on the site, correct? That separates the. The property from the butters, is there a fence?
There's a fence along here, it's the two station half property, and I believe this neighbor has a fence. Don't see it on the plan here, but I saw it on the aerial that I was looking at recently.
Mary, I can address that as one of the butters, if that's helpful.
Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, thank you. Again, this is Ed Braz. There is a fence that goes along our property, but it ends at, let me just blow up the plan here for a second, at our neighbors. At four twenty Great Western Road. So right at our property line, the current fence ends, and it's only a six-foot stockade fence. And I, the way some of the homes sit on the property, particularly our house, it's two stories. When we're on the second floor, we can look down into the property because of the way the, the slope of the land, we're kind of on the. Are, you know, we're up above and we're looking down into. There are some, there are some trees on the property line, but there's a mix of kind of old scrub pine. And some deciduous plants, deciduous trees there, so it's a, it's a very limited buffer. You know, as, when the trees come in in the spring, it offers more of a buffer, but the way it is now and through the winter, it's very limited.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Chair, one, one, I guess, final question to Megan, because I, I know somebody had commented about landscaping, and I don't recall what the comment was.
To Mr. Chair, there was a question about fencing or landscaping, and. The answer from the engineer was that they're not proposing any new fencing or landscaping because they felt the buffer from the neighbors was already there. That's incorrect. There is, shown on the plan, there is a six-foot chain link fence which is required around, by code, around the tanks themselves.
Grant is here.
Thank you.
That was referring to screening and not chain link, just to clarify.
Thanks, Megan.
Mr. Chairman?
Bill Stoltz.
Yes, Bill.
We're going to put a time certain on the operation hours.
I think we have to get the code straight first. But I think that's what I'm mentioning, is that we've got to, we've got to take that into consideration, that's got to have to be a condition.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Bill, that's why I had asked the question for Megan, if she could just double check.
Right.
That offline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you, sir. And Mary, as a part of that, or Megan, would it be helpful to have somebody go back to. Whatever plans were submitted, I think Mr. Braz said that he purchased the land where he lives in two thousand and four, and at that time. There was an open field and that open field is now taken up by part of the Cape Cod Oil operation. When those permits were granted and even prior to that, would there. If there were conditions attached regarding operating hours and noise and so forth, would those not be delineated on those plans somewhere in town hall?
So it depends on whether, that's why, that's why it has Megan to, to look at the history, because. I don't know that any of the other operations are by site plan. Or by special permit approval, they could be as a matter of right, that's why we asked her the question on, on whether there were any existing operating hours. That was the question.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we've had discussions, or any further discussion? So hearing none, I'd like to take a vote on the motion to continue until, is it the eleventh?
I think it was to continue the public hearing until May eleventh, no earlier than six thirty P M.
Yeah, so let's, we were, I think we're pretty ready for a vote here. Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Ross, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joan McFarland?
Joan McFarland, aye.
David Harris? Got to unmute, Dave. Are you there, Dave?
David Harris, aye.
Thank you, Dave. Greg Chadwick?
Greg Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry is aye as well. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. We will see you on the eleventh at six thirty or thereafter.
Thank you, happy night.
Thank you.
Thank you for the public, for, for, I'm participating too, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our second public hearing item of the evening is zoning articles, Article thirty-nine. Town will vote to amend the code of the town of Harwich zoning Article twenty-four, West Harwich Special District by adding a new section. Three twenty-five dash one sixty as follows. Three twenty-five dash one sixty, design guidelines, for the purpose of this section of the Harwich Planning Board shall adopt. Quote, West Harwich Special District Site and Architectural Design Guidelines, unquote. Which shall constitute rules and regulations guiding historic structure, structures and new construction within the West Harwich Special District. Please note, the following article has not been accepted by the selectmen, made town meeting warrant, this notice, the notice is attached. However, it was my understanding that in the last newspaper, the item was. Accepted by the selectmen for the main meeting. Did I have that right, Megan?
Yes.
Incorrect, as it's stated here.
That is for the following article, which is on the next page of your.
The follow-up, thank you.
The next, yes, the first article was accepted and the second article was not.
That's correct, okay, so I, I'm not even paying attention to what I'm reading out, wow, you know, I think that means I should probably run for office. Number two, article, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Harwich zoning by amending section three twenty-five. Dash four two dot L by making the following change. The new text shown in bold underlined and deleting the language shown in strikeout, so. I guess that's not even, if that's not going to be included, we don't even need to discuss it, Mary. Unmute, please. You got to unmute? Thanks, sorry, can't hear you.
So this is the public hearing that's required for zoning change. So you need to open the public hearing for the, for the first zoning article, it's going to be on the, on the town warrant. And then we need to go through the steps for, for, you know, public comment, board comment, and then a vote.
Okay. Even for, so for both of them?
So I would start with the first one and do them separately.
Okay, thank you, all right, so we do the first one for the West Harwich School, Special District. Let's see.
Just reread, just reread the section.
Yes. Section one sixty, three twenty-five dash one sixty. For the purposes of this section, the Harwich Planning Board shall adopt, quote, West Harwich Special District Site and Architectural Design Guidelines. Which shall constitute rules and regulations guiding historic structures and new construction within the West Harwich Special District.
Duncan, I'm sorry, did you, did you actually say that you were opening the public hearing?
Let us open the public hearing for this.
For, for our.
Thirty-nine.
Correct. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any comment from the board? Do we have any questions left over from last meeting's presentation of the content of the. Material as guidelines as opposed to what's listed here, regulations and rules? Yes, Mary?
So I have no questions, I do have a comment that I do think we should vote to recommend. The design guidelines and the adoption of Article thirty-nine at town meeting. This spring, so that we can continue this process forward. So my, my one comment of two cents into the mix.
Thank you. Are there any other comments to make about this? So.
You need to, you need to open up to the public, too.
Do we have anybody in the public here? Yes. Is there anybody that, in the public who would like to address the board in the matter of zoning article number thirty-nine? I think we have nothing here for that. So shall we adopt the motion that Mary suggested?
So we would, we would, if everybody has commented, we would move to close the public hearing, and then we would move to recommend. The article for approval at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the public hearing and recommend the article as represented in our document.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Any further conversation? Well, do a roll call vote, Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Ross, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joan, Joan McFarland?
Joan McFarland, aye.
David Harris? Dave, you got to unmute.
Thanks for muting me, David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Announce. So the second item is a article that was not accepted by the selectmen for the town meeting warrant. The notice is attached, this is opening up the conversation, the, the. Public meeting for article, which does, actually does not have a number, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Harwich. Zoning by amending section three twenty-five dash four two L by making the following change. New text shown in bold underlined and deleting language shown in strikeout. So the, the copy below, what we have now is parking and loading zone setbacks for all uses. Except single family, two-family and single-family with accessory apartment shall be as follows. For commercial structures, wheel stops for parking spaces perpendicular to or at an angle to. A structure shall be located so as to provide a clear area of three feet between the end of a vehicle parked in the space and the nearest structure. Yes, Mary?
Can I ask a question, not through you, to Megan? There's nothing bold underlined and nothing's printed, so I'm just curious if. Did that just get taken out when they, when they prepared the?
The, the Board of Selectmen did not vote to place this article in its totality on the warrant.
Right, but the rest of, we can still have the public hearing on it, right, and recommend it, even though, because then we've gone through the step.
Sure, absolutely.
Public hearing?
It was posted as required, you're, you're still able to hold the hearing?
Is the, but is that the? That's not the full text, is it, the parking and loading zone?
In, in the hearing notice?
Yes. I'm just looking for it, I don't see it here.
That, that was the entire text of the article? The, the language of the. Amendment has bold in it.
Oh, I, so if I could just. What was, so the. I'm looking at the documentation with, that had the whole change, also had parking setbacks and had footnotes on it, and that's just not.
Right.
That was included on the public hearing notice. The original public hearing notice, that was. Prior to having any articles voted on by the selectmen. So that public hearing notice did have the entirety with the zones and the footnotes.
So I would still think we can hold the public hearing and make a recommendation if we want to, we don't have to.
Mr. Chairman?
Bill Stoltz?
Bill? I think, I'd feel uncomfortable voting on this without knowing what's the article.
The article is there, Bill, it's in the, it's in the packet.
The only thing I see is something for angle, angle parking, but when we discussed all this, it was for setbacks of parking lots and rear front sides.
So, so Bill, if you look at, it's, it's not on the agenda, if you look into the packet. After the warrant, after the design guidelines, there's one sheet. And it says article with a blank, and then it's got, it's got the first paragraph that's in the agenda, and then it's got the parking setbacks. In the table with the, with what they are. So I think it actually is there, it's just in the packet and wasn't in the meeting notice, that's all.
Okay.
If you go to the very, very end of the packet. I had a hard time finding it, too, that's why I was wondering where it was.
Oh. Ah, I see, it has been. It looks like it was classed to the Driscoll, last page of the Driscoll piece. Driscoll Engineering.
So, Mr. Chair, if people aren't ready to vote for it, then I would recommend that we. Continue the public hearing till the next meeting, so that we don't lose the public hearing.
Let's please do that.
I, I made that motion.
Can we, we need to continue it to a date and time certain, so. Megan, what's our next meeting, the, is that the twenty-seventh of April?
Yes, April twenty-seventh.
So then I.
Continue the matter to April twenty-seventh.
No, earlier than six thirty P M.
I agree.
And who's the second on that?
Craig Chadwick, second.
Thank you, Greg. Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Ross, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joan McFarland?
Joan McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. So that will be continued. We have new business. A waiver of a site plan for PB twenty twenty-one dash oh five, Allen Harbor Yacht Club. John T. Blue Commodore as owner, Joseph F. Fornier Jr., AIA representative. Seeks approval of a waiver of a site plan review. Pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five dot F. To expand the first floor deck, expand and replace the lower patio, rework the handicap ramp into a new deck expansion area. And the plant demonstrates proposed fencing and handicap parking spaces addition. Property is located at three. Property is located at three seventy-one Lower County Road, map thirteen parcel P one dash three dash four and dash four A in the RH dash one zoning district. So, Mr. Fornier?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Joe McParland, I have to recuse myself in this matter. I'm not able to sit on it. I'm a thirty-year member of the Allen Harbor Yacht Club, former Commodore, and so I, I, I don't feel that I could sit on this. I'd be in a conflict.
So noted. Thank you, Mr. McParland. I'm glad we have an alternate, alternate here, Mr. Rouse, so it looks like you, will you be able to step up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll stay on the line in case, if, if I can help any as you look at their site plan review and so forth.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fornier?
Yes, good. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and also members of the public. Thank you so much for hearing us on our appeal for a waiver of full site plan review for our project. On the screen before you is our site plan, proposed site plan, which indicates our overlay of our proposed deck and to our existing deck space with our, with our calculation of parking. I'd like to start with the, the age of the deck at our club has actually reached its end of life. It has become a it appears to have come, become a safety hazard in one of which that our membership could, could benefit from replacement for a host of reasons, not the least of which is the beautification to the building, but more importantly, the, the additional means of egress that this, that this new structure that we have designed will, will provide. Or we just have the, the one, the one access point utilizing, the, the club utilizes the handicap ramp as a second means of egress, and that's really not as is, as is designed to. The, the other beautification portion of this or, or benefit to, to the facility would be a handicap ramp that meets current code considerations. Currently, our existing one does not. And because of the multi-level deck that exists, it actually makes it a, a safety hazard for anyone who is physically challenged in netting only one of our door structures to access the, the existing dining hall on the second floor on the upper level, I should say. The, the other improvements would be to the spacing that we would allow around our tables that are currently on our deck space that allows for better accessibility. It allows for better access in the event of an emergent because we'll be able to spread them, spread them further apart. And, and lastly, the, the the materials that we're looking to use are composite materials, the, the latest industry standards that will limit the amount of, of maintenance required for the facility. As you know, because of our proximity to the water, this is something of great concern environmentally, so we suspect that over time, this will, this will offer a benefit to to, to basically non-invasive to the, to the sensitive environmental. And lastly, by updating our patio space, we need to expand it in order to structure this provide structure to this upper parcel. And in doing so, we've allowed ourselves to mitigate the surface drainage runoff by a roof structure so we can contain our water runoff into the, into this resource area. We presented that to Conservation and Conservation has appreciated our efforts forward in doing that, so we'll be able to take off a fair amount of our, of our surface area runoff and, and contain our erosion. And lastly, the improvement of our handicap facility by offering two dedicated handicapped parking spaces with a loading section that will be in addition to our existing parking space currently in our paved turnaround area entry. The, I, I feel that the overall, the, the improvement, not only to the club, but I think it would also be a visual improvement to the neighborhood and also not more deleterious to the neighborhood. Hopefully for that same reason. With that, that actually concludes my initial presentation, so if I, if I can turn it back to you and members of the board for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fornier. Do we have town staff reports?
Yes, we do. We have comments from fire and highways have no concerns. The only concern that health has is that, that no increase in the number of restaurant seats is allowed under the current septic system. Conservation had commented that the approved plans, which are what you see in front of you have been, have been reviewed under their case back in September of twenty nineteen. Further approval for additional shed expansion, stonework, and railroad ties handled administrat- administratively and approved in November of twenty twenty. Planning board staff comments is that the narrative provided describes the scope of work, whereas the plan provided demonstrates additional changes that are not part of this request for a waiver of site plan. The last full planning board review was in April of nineteen ninety-four. The board approved the addition of an in-ground pool and a pertinent work. The approved nineteen ninety-four plan demonstrates forty-five parking spaces at the club property on the south side of Lower County and appears to accommodate fifty-two spaces at the club. And that they have submitted a parking calculation plan.
Okay. So it sounds to me as though we have a the staff suggests that there is a conflict between the narrative and the plan. Does this go beyond simply parking places, or does this have to do with the alteration of the fabric of the, the building itself?
The, you're directing back to me, Duncan?
Please, sorry, thank you.
Okay. So the narrative has descriptions of increasing the deck, both upper and lower deck and a handicap ramp. The plan that you're looking at in front of you has proposed fencing, proposed new parking spaces, and proposed stonework near the road entrance on Lower County. So those those improvements were not listed in the narrative.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fornier, how do we reconcile this this cleavage between narrative and some, the documents submitted?
Yes, understood. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through, Ms. Eldridge actually reached out to me about a week and a half ago, asking the same questions, and my response, it'd be the same to the board as a whole in that these appurtenances that are shown here on this plan are actually intended for future consideration. The surveyor thought to include all of what was approved by Conservation. The narrative limits what we're before this board for, for a waiver simply for the matter that we do not, do not intend to take on this this additional work as shown at this time. We also understand that at such time, we do look to enact these appurtenances that were approved by Conservation. We would then come back before this planning board for a site plan review, and I suspect because of the, the traffic issues that are going to need to be addressed more formally as part of that site plan review, we, we suspect that that will be a full site plan review, and that's our expectation. At this time, because of what we would consider a de minimis alteration to our existing facility and the betterments that we propose, that's the reason we're before you in, in limiting our scope of work to these two areas of concentration for that, for that waiver of full site plan review. We don't feel that the, the improvements that we propose at this particular time are going to impact the the more expansive review, which would be, which is understood under, under a full site plan review and some of these other pieces. I believe the only piece that was not marked as future as was supposed to is this proposed fence. We do, and for the sake of smaller screens, I'll zoom in for you. This, this shed exists as does this dumpster, as does this fence. The proposal before Conservation was to increase the size of the shed and expand the fence as you see. None of this work is being proposed at this particular time, and what I would offer to this to this board for consideration is to revise this plan for record indicating and confirming for record purposes what our proposed work is, which is this deck and patio space and these two handicap spaces with landing zone. And everything else can be marked as future.
Thank you for that excellent explanation. I see Mary Maslowsky had her hand up.
I, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess from my perspective, I think it gets confusing when you have a an existing site plan, so am I correct that there's an existing site plan on the, on the lot as it currently?
This, this actually, to the chair, this actually is our proposed site plan for our deck expansion and for the and for the handicap and for the benefit of the board. This is what was submitted. This is the plan that was submitted to Conservation. So you can see everything was on the table with Conservation.
Right.
Right, so my question isn't about this plan. My question is, is there an existing site plan review that was already approved by planning board for this location? When Allen, when Allen Harbor was developed?
I, I do have the plan and the file from nineteen ninety-four. I can hold up the plan if you want to look at it.
I guess my question is just, was there, was there, was there a full site plan review done at that point? Because I, I just tend to think it gets confusing if you have a site plan and then you waived site plan and then you come back for a site plan approval again. It just.
Well, looking at the file, there was an application in nineteen ninety-four, which was then denied in nineteen ninety-four. So there was not an approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Are there changes?
Yes, Mr. McParland. I, I just want to point out, in the planning staff comments, there's a reference to the board having approved the addition of an in-ground pool and, and important work. There was no in-ground pool at this location, and that was never done.
Thank you.
So Megan, could I ask a, a question? I don't see that a staff report on, on the scanned agenda or agenda packet. Could you, by any chance, could you share your screen?
Sure.
Unless it's someplace else. Because mine goes right from the plan to, to the covenant release.
Okay. Let me see if I can hold that up. Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we want to see.
I just wanted to take a quick look at the, at the staff report that I don't have in front of me. And can't seem to find it in pages that I have.
It's on page one seventy-six of one seventy-nine, if you can find that.
Maybe, maybe that's where.
Maybe, no, actually, maybe you're right, and it skipped right over, because this is for.
Right, that's the covenant release.
Yep. So I'd be happy to read it.
Could you? I'm sorry.
Not a problem. And is there, you wanted to read, want me to read which part?
Just your staff comments again, because I didn't take notes.
Okay. Okay. So it starts off with planning board jurisdiction, site plan approval, with the applicability section. And the description states the applicant filed with town clerk March tenth. Project narrative, proposed additions, alterations, which included a site plan showing proposed deck and ramp expansion prepared by Ryder and Wilcox, July twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, and final version dated March fifth, twenty twenty-one. Staff comments, fire and highway had no issues. Health had no issues, just a comment that the restaurant seats shall remain the same number. Conservation, the attached plan was approved in September twenty nineteen. Further approval for additional shed expansion, stonework, and railroad ties were handled administratively and approved eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty. Planning staff comments, the narrative provided describes the scope of work, whereas the plan provided demonstrates additional changes that are not part of this request for a waiver of site plan. The last full planning board review was in April of nineteen ninety-four. And there is an error because this staff comment said the board approved the site plan in nineteen ninety-four, but looking through the actual file from nineteen ninety-four, that site plan was denied. And that was, that is what I had stated before, Mary.
Thanks, Megan. So that's just a do you know what that decision said? Do you have that decision in front of you? Was that for the, was that for the pool, maybe? Maybe that's why it wasn't built?
Site plan, swimming pool patio and clubhouse expansion. So we have the decision that stated special permit application of the Allen Harbor Yacht Club. The applicant seeks a site plan special permit under the Harwich zoning bylaw, section ten, paragraphs G and K, to construct an approximately two thousand forty-six square foot swimming pool with a six thousand nine hundred sixty-eight square foot patio area at the existing Allen Harbor Yacht Club. Yeah, yeah, yada, that was denied. And prior to that there is nothing beyond the swimming pool.
So just a stupid question. Are those files in, in the planning department by application or are they by location? So doing, like, would there be another? Would it be worth looking to, to see if there was another one that was approved at some point?
It would be worth looking at. These are by application.
Okay. I just, I just wonder if there was another one somewhere.
Mary, can you tell me what your question is? I might know it.
So, Joe, I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay. All right.
Um. I guess from my perspective, looking at it, I, I would just want to know if there's an approved site plan on the property. I understand the request for a waiver of site plan for a smaller project. I guess my question to the applicant would be, is there harm, is there? Um, I guess my question to the applicant would be, is there a harm, is there a reason that you wouldn't just go forward with full site plan review and then you can just, you just don't, don't, um, you wouldn't have to start that part of the project today. In, in this year, you could do it next year or request for, or request an extension on, on a special permit.
So if I'm understanding the, we're reluctant to go at this particular point for so, full site plan review is I don't believe that we have, um, the full support um, at this point for everything. So it's, it's just a matter, um, it, it's just a matter of whether we know, how do I, how do I word this best?
So do you mean your support for your board or support from our, from, from the town?
No, support, support from, um, support from the club. Because they're, they're not certain that they want to move forward. This is a pie in the sky, um, um, type suggestion. Um, I know, I don't believe we have the support of the club. And because of the more urgent, um, matter of replacing this deck for safety, um, this, this is what moved up our timetable, um, quite a bit. And we felt that because of this is a, um, really a low intensive use portion of our, of our club um, in general, um, and for the safety concerns and the opportunity of providing better access, you know, to our membership. And for all the fire safety reasons, you know, brought up before, then maybe we just get, you know, bite off this, get this fixed. And then look at the other part, the other improvements further down, knowing full well that it would trigger a full site plan review. Um, so it's really just a matter of timing of, of making this a safer environment.
Understood. Um, I guess my, my feeling if staff agrees would be the plan should be amended to reflect what you're actually requesting versus what was approved at conservation.
And, and I fully appreciate that and endorse that as well. This, um, uh, again, it wasn't presented in the, in the fashion that I had requested. But a, at the time, time was really of the essence at that particular point. So, um, but I, I am hopeful that the, the board has the ability to, um, narrow the scope of our work. Um, and I, and I believe you do have the ability to do that, um, to these two points, um, in conjunction with the narrative. And then we can follow up with an, with a, either an as-built. Um, or more importantly, I, I would rather get something before you, before we start the work to see you have something on record.
I think it makes sense.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
I don't think so. I think that seems like a reasonable way to go ahead, Mary, don't you?
That answered my questions. Um, just through you, Mr. Chair to Megan. I just don't have a copy of the, um, of the motions and the conditions.
Uh.
So, um, so I would request that maybe somebody could read them or Megan could propose them and somebody could move them as she reads them.
Does, does anybody have them?
I have them, but I'm not sure, uh, the findings of facts and the, uh, the waiver.
So we would have to, we would have to do, you'd have to start with closing the public. Are we in a public hearing?
Yeah. Uh, we haven't heard, yeah, we haven't heard anybody from the public, however. I think we have two people on.
Public hearing. Are we in a public hearing or a public meeting?
We are in a public meeting.
Because it's a waiver of site plan. So we would just need to, to follow the staff recommendations on on the, on the staff report. I just don't have it in front of me. Unfortunately.
I'm happy to read them.
Do a screenshot and send them to you.
You can if you like.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you emailing, emailing them to me, Duncan?
I'm emailing to, to you right now.
And I just texted them to you.
Uh huh. Thank you. I think yours may come sooner.
You got it now, Mary?
Yeah, it looks like. It's stay rotated.
Sorry about that.
No, no, your fault. I didn't notice it wasn't, it wasn't there when I printed this packet. So Megan, I'm correct that there's nothing that we need, we don't need to close a public hearing, correct? This is a public meeting?
Right.
That's correct. This is, this was a continuance.
Okay.
Sorry. No, I'm sorry. The last one was a continuance. This is just a public meeting.
Okay. So then, um, I've got, I think I have what we need when people are ready to vote. If people are ready to vote.
Uh, are we ready to vote? Any further questions for the board? I think we, I think we're ready.
Okay. Then I move that the, uh, planning board adopts the following findings of facts. Um, one, that the property is located in, is located at three seventy-one Moore County Road and is within the R dash H dash one zoning district and operates as a private club. Two, the redevelopment of the, uh, first floor deck ramp and the lower deck does not adversely affect the neighborhood. The modification of the structure as proposed will not be incompatible with the characteristics of the neighborhood. Four, the project shall be limited to the work presented in the application narrative. Five, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, um, as as changes to the parking area under this waiver of site plan application.
It continues on to the next.
Just trying to get it up. Um, six, the specific site is an appropriate location for such use, structure or condition. And seven, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
Wait a second.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
David Harris? Got to turn on. Unmute.
Uh, David Harris, aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry goes down with an aye. We have waiver motions.
So waiver of site plan, uh, I move that we vote to approve case number PB two zero two one dash zero five. AYHC applicant care of Joseph F Fornier Junior for waiver of site plan pursuant to section three twenty-five dash fifty-five dot F of the code of the town of Harwich to allow for development and expansion of the upper deck ramp, lower patio for the property located at three seventy-one Moore County Road, being map thirteen. Parcel P one dash three, P one dash four and P four A. Uh, the decision is based on the findings of fact. And sorry, can you bear with me? Sorry. The process, the decision is based on the findings of fact stated and the fact that the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site or the, or to abutting properties and structures and application in the structures and the application meet the necessary requirements and criteria for approval. Part of that's paper.
Do we have a second?
Craig Chadwick, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go for the roll call. Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Um, quick question, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ms. Maslowski, um, the verbiage that you read regarding the parking. So you do not want us to develop these two handicap spaces at this point?
So we, so the handicap spaces. Are those, are those in addition to?
We, we have one handicap space here, but as, as many of you are aware, we have a gravel parking lot. What we are looking to do is to improve our, uh, handicap accessibility um, and create two concrete pads with a loading zone between them dedicated for handicap parking. As I mentioned before, we have ones, and let me blow this up for you a little bit more. I, I know we're outside of the, the public media at the moment, um, but I just, before I let you all go or vice versa, we have this existing parking space here for handicap. We're introducing these two spaces here. And if, if it, if that wants to be something done for future, that's fine. But I just wanted to, you know, interject it at this particular point.
So I'm going to have to punch back to Megan and ask where that falls in the application narrative. Does it?
It was, it was not identified in the narrative as proposed work.
Yeah.
Then if it wasn't in the narrative, then we, I don't think we can, we can vote on this application. It would have to be a subsequent application.
I appreciate that. In the revised site plan, I just wanted to make sure that we've got that clear.
Mr. David Harris, I have a, a comment to advance political correctness. The term is not a handicap parking space. It's an accessible parking space.
I apologize.
The term handicap has a, has a proper usage is on the golf course.
I greatly appreciate that, sir, through the chair and, and, uh, and I stand corrected.
Thank you. I'm applauding you, Dave. Thank you for that clarification.
And, and I want to say horrible.
Does everybody understands why? Because of the derivation of the term handicap is cap in hand, asking for a handout. And people with disabilities are the bravest people I've ever met. They certainly shouldn't be called handicapped.
I agree with that wholeheartedly, sir.
All right. Thank you very much for letting me state my piece.
Terrific.
All right. Um, I guess I'm done with you folks now.
Thank you, Mr. Fournier.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time this evening. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good evening yourself. Thank you.
I'll be now.
Next item of business is old business. We have, uh, PB two thousand seven dash thirty-six Southwest Gate Road, Mr. Zipo, original owner was Mr. Chapman. Item number three dash B, woman. So. Do we have a, um, it looks like we have a limited staff report. Megan, do you want to review this for us quickly? I see that Mr. Zipo here.
Sure. This was before you at your last meeting. Uh, this is a release of covenant. Um, we have the map that you had requested
Yep.
last month, um, showing which parcels would be released. Um, we have comments from staff that water department has no outstanding issues. Again, this is a partial release of the seven of the remaining eight lots at Southwest Gate Road held under agreement and covenant. Um, planning staff comments. In the in lieu of sidewalk fee payment shall be paid prior to release of the lot. The sidewalk fee noted in the case history is eight thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars sixty cents. Staff concurs with the recommending, the recommended partial release. Uh, one lot, lot four shall be continued to be held in the agreement and covenant until all requirements have been satisfied. Um, the town engineer concurred that he believes lot four is the lot that should be held back.
Thank you so much. Does this solve the questions that we had, uh, last week, Mr. Or last time, Mr. Chadwick? I think that was, uh.
Yes, that, that was, I was looking for the map. That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
On the back.
Yep. Do we have any disagreement with what, uh, the recommendations have been for the town?
None.
Okay. Should we go ahead with a motion?
So I move that we vote to approve a partial release of agreement and covenant for seven lots being lots numbers one through three and lots five through eight of the Southwest Gate Road subdivision, which was planning board number PB two zero zero seven dash thirty-six. Uh, and that lot number four remain, uh, restricted by the covenant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Arthur Rouse, second.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you so much, Mr. Zipo.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a pleasant evening.
You too.
Appreciate it.
The second item of old business is the same covenant release issue for PB twenty sixteen dash oh five. Uh, on Denwich Road, Tonka Girl LLC, Mike Esser is the manager. Uh, we have the limited staff report number two from April thirteenth. Um, very quick review of that, uh, Megan, if we may, just to clarify the map and site. It looks like we have a handsome color photograph at the bottom.
Thank you. Yes, the limited staff report is that the applicant is seeking a release of three lots at Denwich Road under the agreement and covenant, book and page two nine seven three two dash twelve. The town engineer reviewed the documents and plans and he offers the following comments. The vacant lots adjacent to the subdivision roadway have been completely cleared with the soil exposed. There doesn't appear to be erosion controls or vegetation installed, applied to the cleared land or disturbed areas. Permanent erosion control installation states that final vegetation and mechanical measures to stabilize the land surface and control erosion shall be installed as soon as practical after construction ends. Stockpiled material being stored on at least two of the vacant properties and the fire hydrants don't appear to be shown on the as-built plan. Based on the comments above, he suggests that one of the lots to be held in covenant until the work is completed. And planning staff offers the following comments. Uh, there are three lots, lot one is number three Denwich Road, lot two is seven Denwich Road, and lot three is eleven Denwich Road. The in lieu of sidewalk fee has been satisfied and all administrative requirements have been met. A stamped as-built plan showing the fire hydrants shall be submitted before the final lot release. And staff concurs and recommends that one lot being lot one, which is three Denwich Road, continue to be held under the agreement and covenant until the above issues have been satisfied.
Thank you so much. Are there any other issues with this? I think this pretty much clarifies the same questions that we had last time.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning board, board vote to approve a partial release of agreement and covenant for two lots, those being lots number two and lots number three of the Denwich Road subdivision, um, which was planning board, uh, number PB two zero one six dash zero five, and confirming that lot one three Denwich Road shall continue to be held under agreement and covenant.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick, we'll do our roll call vote, starting with Mr. Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Melissa McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Uh, Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. So it looks like the last item is briefings and reports by board members, is there anything for us that you have, Mary?
No, no, um, CPC is, uh, the articles were recommended to town meeting, and it looks like they're, um, on town meeting agenda, so if anyone has any questions, the, all the applications are on, uh, the CPC website. The CPC page on the town of Harwich website. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you, Mary, any other reports, any other, uh, information? Megan?
Um, if I may, I'd like to let you all know that the town has made an offer to John Eichmann for the next planner of, uh, town planner, community development. Uh, he has accepted the offer. Um, if you don't know John Eichmann, he has been an eight and a half year veteran of the Cape Cod Commission Regulatory, Chief Regulatory Agent. Um, lots and lots of experience, I believe he sat on this board at one point in the, in the past. Um, his starting date is the first week of May, so I will be with you for one more meeting, and then hopefully he'll be able to take over.
Terrific, I know he got glowing reviews by Elaine.
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Megan, I, I believe he actually addressed us when we were talking about the DCPC.
That's right.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Well, I'm sure that's a relief to you, Megan, and it's, um, it'll be great, uh, for all of us to, to have some, uh, divide, the division of labor return to the natural order that we've all come to enjoy, so, anyway. Well, thank you very much for that. And we'll look forward to our next and last meeting with you, Megan, in two weeks.
Uh huh.
If there are no further items, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
I should do it again. Craig Chadwick, second.
Roll call vote, Duncan Berry, aye, Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Thank you all, wonderful meeting tonight.
Hey Duncan, Craig Duncan, before we hang up, I was shocked and saddened to hear about Steve. Um, you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I hadn't heard that, was there, is there anything in the paper, or you have any further information?
Yeah, I saw a line at the Cape Cod article, and Cape Cod Times had an actually very nice feature item, uh, yesterday. So, and also I think it was mentioned in Harwich Old Timers on Sunday.